Good evening and welcome, everyone, to the August 2nd, 2023 Yarmouth Planning Board Meeting. I am Joanne Crowley, Chair. This is to formally advise as required by Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 38, Paragraphs 18 to 25, pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, an act relative to extending certain state of emergency accommodations, signed into law on June 16th, 2021. The Yarmouth Planning Board will hold a public meeting on August 2nd, 2023, at 5:30 PM. Public is welcome to attend in person this evening or via alternative public access, provided on the meeting notice available on the town website. I will begin by taking roll call. Susan Britta, Will Rubenstein, Jim Saban, Peter Slovac, Ken Smith, Chris Vincent, Joanne Crowley here. Seeing that we have a quorum present, I'll now call the meeting to order, and I'd ask you to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
Thank you. The first item on our agenda this evening is the continuation of the July 19th public hearing on the design review approval and special permit request for Red Jacket Resorts. The applicant is RJ Resorts Beach Resort Owner LLC, represented by Marion Rose of Singer &amp; Singer. The location is at 2028 South Shore Drive, South Yarmouth, Mass., Assessor Map 19, Parcel 20 dot 1, zoning districts R-25 and the HMOD District 2. The applicant is seeking our approval for two actions this evening to redevelop a portion of their hotel property using zoning bylaw 404 dot 2, Hotel Motel Overlay District, HMOD 2. These two actions, of the first relates to our responsibility for overseeing design review approval. For this various new improvements at the Red Jacket Resort, most of which, all of which meet the architectural site design standards, have been separated from the existing site conditions and buildings which do not meet the standards. As a result, the applicant also needs to seek a special permit for relief from Section 404 point 2 point 6 of the zoning bylaw for the project for the existing site conditions and existing buildings which do not comply with the Yarmouth Architectural and Site Design Standards. I'd first like to introduce Marion Rose from Singer &amp; Singer, who was presented last time when we met last week, Marion, two weeks ago. Thank you for joining us. Next, Kathy Williams, after Marion, will review her supplemental memo. We will then have any written comments we've received between now and then. Planning Board members, I will then ask to comment and question, and then if there are any members of the public who are here and who would like to speak, we will entertain your questions as well. I'd like to also note that Mark Grills, our Building Commissioner, is here as well. So, Marion, if you'd like to start?
Certainly. Again, I'm Marion Rose, for the record, from Singer &amp; Singer and Dennis Fort. It's good to see you all. I'm going to keep this brief because we had a long hearing last time and like to incorporate everything we said in terms of the presentation from last meeting and just focus on the new, the limited new items to present. And truly, the item that I would like to speak about is just the change in finishes between, there's an outdoor pavilion and there's this fireplace. On the plans that we presented originally, that was to be brick. Literally, in this meeting last time, the architect looked at that and said, "I really want it to be stone." And so, that's a stone veneer. It will provide a little variety. We've submitted, the slide decks were revised from last time, showing the stone veneer, and we'd asked that that be incorporated rather than the brick veneer for that fireplace. That is the only development in terms of the design that's new. The only other development is, we had been talking quite a lot with the neighbors, particularly the neighbors at Gateway Isles. We've talked to the Homeowners Association President, and he was supportive of this project, but we did secure a letter of support. And so, that, I believe, is in y'all's records, and so I wanted to flag that, as I think Kathy probably will. I do want to say, just before I close, this is as brief as I've ever been, that I have with me John Bologna, who's Coastal Engineering. If there are any questions, I think before the meeting, we were talking among ourselves about the site visit yesterday between John and Ken Smith, and so if there are any questions about that, he is here and ready to discuss any effects that visit and the knowledge learned and the known unknowns that were discovered then. We can speak to that. We also have Holly Handrichan, who's the Long Term Manager, and so if there were any operational questions left over from last meetings, we have a good person to answer those questions. And we also have Lance Walker on the site, oh, sorry, on the Zoom, and Tamer Gerges, who is the Project Manager from WATG, which is the architectural firm.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ari. Perhaps we should go right to the visit yesterday. One of our members, Mr. Ken Smith, went to the site. He has some background knowledge there, Mr. Bologna, so perhaps you can brief us on your meeting, and then I would ask Mr. Smith to give us a briefing as well, so we can get an understanding of what's happened in the last two weeks.
Yes, so a little bit surprised, and so I can thank you, Ken, for visiting with us, and I overheard him say, "I wish, you know, we would have talked three months ago." But, yeah, we scoured the town hall records and the Red Jacket Resort files, and we didn't see anything there, so we had assumed that the existing systems were all in the parking lot, because, you know, a lot of sewer manholes were there and, you know...
If I, just may I interrupt for one second, Mr. Bologna? Some members were not here last week, although they have read the video, I've read the minutes and gone through the video. If you could just, for the public's benefit as well, if you could just briefly describe what the issue is with regard to drainage?
Yeah, it's pretty simple, actually. One of our drainage structures is in a leaching field, sanitary, you know, the septic system leaching field, and I think that's what Ken flagged out initially. There's also, you know, multiple septic tanks that run in one of the courtyard areas, so the collection system's up in that area as well, and we had drainage indicated in those areas. So, that's really fundamentally what the problem is, and then there's also, there's actually two leach areas. One is sort of by the interior pool, if you're looking at the image on the screen, over on the right-hand side, yeah, there's a facility there, and then the other one is over, far over to the left, in the, you know, it's called the beachfront lawn area. It's actually kind of like in that area. That's where the other septic leaching area is, there, in their leach trenches. So, we were showing a leach field for the drainage in the beachfront area, beachfront lawn, and so obviously that's not going to be able to go there because you've got drainage there, so that's going to get relocated. And then the other one on the other side, adjacent to the interior pool building, you know, you need to have a separation between the swimming pool and the leaching area. So, that's where we're trying to land right now, is exactly locate where that is, so that we can get the geometry of that all established, so we meet proper setbacks and so forth. As far as the relocation of the drainage areas, I think there's other places on the site that we can capture. Leach trenches on the lower-hand part of the building that was on the, we call the east wing there, there's, you know, diffusers which would run parallel to the building, and there's sufficient room to kind of gang them up and to, you know, take advantage of that area, and then reconfigure the leaching trenches on the other side, which would be on the east side, north top of the page there, same type of thing there. So, I think there's areas that we can relocate the leaching facilities. The question is really more the ones of the setbacks, so we might have to shift the pool. I think, you know, Ken and we, you know, and we're on the site, talked about maybe shifting the pool further away. We still would respect that pavilion area. There's a coastal boundary that's established, and, you know, we would not move that. We'd propose on essentially relocating, maybe reconfiguring the pool a bit, and rearranging the furniture, essentially, so, you know, I think, you know, kind of, all this news comes at such a short notice, I think it's workable, but, you know, we do have some work to do, I think, and kind of rolling up our sleeves and figuring out, I hope we can locate those plans, they'd be very helpful, you know? Shaking his head.
No, unfortunately, I'm shaking my head there, John.
Yeah. So, anyway, so that's where we're at. I mean, I guess it's, I mean, it's good to know this now, to be honest with you, rather than being under construction.
Right.
So, you know, it's, you've got to go back to the drawing board and kind of figure some of this stuff here. I think, you know, Kathy, we were talking earlier whether or not you want to condition the project as such, so that we can at least kind of wrap up this piece of it, and that's up to your board to decide.
Could I just ask some clarifying questions?
Yes, certainly, Kathy.
So, you have a leaching, a septic leaching field here?
Correct.
And then you have one here?
Correct.
You obviously are trying to keep this one that's here?
Correct, yeah, well, both of them.
You're going to keep both leaching fields?
Yes.
The drainage that's here?
Yes.
Would then try to be relocated somewhere?
Correct.
It's all underground, wouldn't be visible?
Correct.
So, this whole area here would remain essentially from the surface exactly the same?
That's correct.
And then the pool here, in order to accommodate the leaching field here and the separations that you need, would probably move to the south or to the left side, and maybe you would lose some of the cabanas or something in order to basically allow the, I think it's like, is it mounded septic system, to be remain in this particular location?
Correct.
So, what you're talking about is modifying the pool location and some of the amenities on the pool deck?
Correct.
Okay. So, I just wanted to be clear, I understood what was going to look like from the surface. So, everything that would be changed would be within the U of this building and not really visible to anyone outside of this area?
But, new plans would need to be submitted?
That's correct.
New conceptual drawings would need to be submitted. So, what are our options here, Kathy? Can...
Well, obviously, it would be ideal to know exactly what you're talking about, but I think maybe it's a case where we've had some conditions before, where just acknowledging the adjustments to the pool location within the U shape and of the building may be required to accommodate an existing leaching field north of the pool. Minor amendments to the pool location and deck amenities can be approved by, and usually it's the Building Commissioner, or it could be me, if deemed, basically, if deemed to be minor, without needing to come back to the Planning Board, and no further relief would be needed. I mean, if you need any other relief besides what you're given here tonight, if you're given relief here tonight, you'd have to come back. But I can't imagine them making, and these switches, you know, kind of basically into this rectangle here, would really impact what you guys would be voting on this evening, but acknowledging that there needs to maybe be a condition and a mechanism to have another, somebody have another looksee at it and say, "Okay, this is still staying the same," and confirming that you don't need any further relief, and that you can proceed, you know, with your existing permitting.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Smith?
Based from our walk around yesterday, John, correct me if I'm wrong, basically, we're talking about shifting, or, wait, excuse me for saying that. You're talking about moving the pool basically 10 feet further to the south, so to get away from separation on that, what I'll call the northerly leaching field.
Correct.
But beyond that, conceptually, the, nothing's changing other than the pool deck and the deck chair layout, correct?
Correct.
So, what we're seeing, conceptually, is other, is based on just what you just said, is the location of the pool shifts a little bit?
That's correct.
And there's some accommodation in terms of where the cabanas are?
Basically, the way I'm looking at those cabanas to the south would have to shift to the north, because you're going to be just moving that pool further south.
Okay.
That's really just to get away from that leaching field.
So, you think everything underground that's here could remain? I thought there was grade changes that you'd need?
Everything underground can remain.
Right, but would it be elevated, or...
No, no, that would all stay the same as far as elevation's concerned, and we'd probably make some adjustments to the grade inside that courtyard area as well, because we've got some handicap accessibility issues that we have to deal with as well. Yeah, the pool might need to be tweaked a little bit as far as the shape, the geometry, and, you know, I mean, but I mean, fundamentally, what you're looking at as far as the pool deck is concerned, you know, shifting it further south and then rearranging the cabanas, you know, essentially moving the furniture around.
And you're certain there's no impact on that 10-foot shift to the south, on anything underground?
Well, yeah, well...
There's a reserve area and there's a clearance area there, Susan.
Already existing.
Already existing.
So, there's a, I'm sorry, a reserve area and what else?
There's a reserve area to the, to the south, and there's a clearance area off the reserve area. So, you have enough room, based on our walkthrough yesterday, to shift everything, Kathy, to the south, to get it away from that northerly leaching field.
No more than 10 feet?
I want to give them some flexibility.
Yeah, I don't want to, yeah. I'm not going to answer for them, so...
Yeah, we've got to look at the setback requirements on the Board of Health.
If it were more than 10 feet, would that require them to come back, Kathy?
I, this is, I guess, up to you guys on how comfortable you are, but to me, it sounds like you're moving, say, even if you moved it 20 feet and you had to eliminate a row of cabanas or something to kind of leave this area, I don't think it's really changing the concept very much at all, and I think if they had come with that, I don't see you would be voting any differently, but I think there might need to be some mechanism in the condition to double-check this, to make sure that, you know, it is, you ultimately determine that it is exactly what you're saying, but once you get in there, you may find that there's something a little bit different, and just also confirming that no additional relief is required because of that modification. Lots of times, special permits get issued, people come back and say, "Oh, I want to tweak this a little bit, I want to tweak that a little bit." It's not large enough, it's kind of determined by the Building Commissioner sometimes with, you know, coordination with me, is this something that we need to go all the way back before the board? And if it's applying the intent, there's no additional relief required, we don't make people come back. I mean, we don't want to make this process harder than it needs to be, as long as the intent and the basics of the proposal are the same, and the conditions can still be met, and there's no additional relief needed and that type of thing.
And there would be administrative oversight by you and Mark?
Yeah.
As to whatever the change is, and that it's executed properly, right?
I'm saying this, I don't know if Mark would agree?
Oh, Mark, Mr. Commissioner? So, Kathy, I hate to put the burden on you, but this would be an additional condition on the permit, 118.
Correct, yes.
So, in our packets, based on the discussions last week and what we heard tonight, the series of three conditions have been identified for special permit 118. We would be adding a fourth. In our discussions again last week, we talked about irrigation, you've included that. We also talked about existing plantings in the northeast, you've taken care of that, and you've already talked about the lighting and the coordination and collaboration, you've reached out with your neighbors to the north, so we appreciate that. And with this additional information, we would add a fourth condition. Do you have suggested language on that, Kathy? Or how best to proceed with moving this forward? I'm with you on trying to help you?
Thank you.
Get started.
Yeah.
If there are no other objections from the board, and any other questions from the board, I apologize, I didn't ask if there are any other questions about this from any other board members? Or concerns about the language that Kathy has offered with regard to the three conditions existing? We're all, we're good?
Okay, good.
I guess, you know, maybe we'll just kind of go very briefly over...
We did want to go over your memo.
Okay.
Sorry about that. We jumped right to the fourth, fourth condition. Sorry about that. Your memo is important.
There's a few things that we, that we need to talk about, just so that I don't forget. Just the written comment was received from Richard Palmroy, and you all have a copy of it, and he is the President of the Gateway Isles, and he commented on his, you know, having met with the Red Jacket and worked with them, especially with Attorney Rose, and have reviewed their issues and discussed some solutions. With the right of way, it sounds as though they've made some modifications so that the residents of Gateway Isles can still continue to go across the Red Jacket property in order to get access to the beach, so that was another thing. And it sounds like you've modified the gate a little bit in order to make sure that more than strollers can get through and all of those...
We have not modified the gate.
You're going to.
But we are working towards a solution on that. We hear what they're saying, and, you know, if there is a way to do that without totally recreating the gate, and I think there will be overtime. We know that's a priority for the neighbors.
And then the trash pickup, we had talked about that before, working with your trash pickup company in order to modify the times to be a little bit more amenable to everybody, including the, including the gaps.
Correct, we share that goal.
There. And then, and then the questions regarding the parking lot lighting, Marion Rose had shared that language that's in my memo with them, and they felt that that really addressed their concern. So, this was sent to me as a letter of support for the project. So, it's nice to see when neighbors work together and can kind of come to some solutions amongst themselves and not make you guys do it. So, the only thing that's in the, that's in the memo is, there's a couple additional findings. In order to give a special permit, you kind of have to meet the special permit granting criteria, but then you need to show why. What are the findings that you have that will meet them? We had some additional, previous ones that were in the original memo, and then I think we added some additional based on some of the things that Marion said at the last meeting, which was also improving handicap accessible parking spaces and accessible rooms in the hotel, and then, of course, that coordination with the northern property partners to address lighting concerns and agree to condition to mitigate this issue. So, those are really good findings, and then when you get to the, to the actual suggested motion for the special permit, I think I'd like to skip this for a second and go to the thing that we need to do first, which is, we need to do the design review.
I just ask one question on the gate. Is that, is that going to be wide enough for a wheelchair? Is that going to be handicapped accessible?
The gate, the gate opens, and so the only issue is, it wasn't part of the design. The design was just to have a gate?
Right.
That was unlocked. There happens to be a gap right next to the gate.
Right, right.
And so, that's too, I don't know if it's narrow or wide enough for a wheelchair, but the gate opens.
It's anyway.
It's certainly wide enough.
Yeah, guys, my apologies on that, Kathy. We did kind of jump out of order there with regard to design review.
Yep, so, one of the first thing that we need to do is conduct the design review and determine, go down if I can get there. As an HMOD 2 project, the Planning Board is the design review authority, so you need to go through and make sure that they're meeting the Architectural and Site Design Standards. What we have in your packets is a draft version, this gives a brief description of the project, and then it also goes through the different siting strategies in the standards, as well as the building strategies. They're broken down into what is being proposed, meaning the work that's being proposed right now, and then the existing conditions, the remaining conditions that are not part of this particular project. So, as you go through, streetscape, I'm not going to go through each one unless you want me to do so, but all of the proposed either met the standards or was not applicable, but it was a problem with the existing, where there was discrepancies because of where the parking was located, the amount of buffers and the type and the width of the buffers, and that type of thing that weren't meeting them. And in the draft that you have, it kind of explains what's not being met when we have a discrepancy there. So, that's all been explained in the document. And then the building strategies, it's basically, you know, I don't believe any of the existing buildings really meet our design, it's an older structure, so it hasn't been necessarily designed that. So, what you have here at the bottom is a suggestion to basically make a motion to approve the proposed improvements as shown in the submitted plans as having met the provisions of the Yarmouth Architectural and Site Design Standards, and to deny design review approval of the existing remaining elements which do not meet all of the Yarmouth Architectural and Site Design Standards and require relief from the Planning Board via a special permit.
So moved.
Second, someone?
Second.
Okay, we'll do roll call. Mr. Vincent?
Aye.
Ms. Britta?
Aye.
Mr. Slovac?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
And myself, aye. That's unanimous. Okay, now we'll go to special permit, Kathy.
I don't, I'm assuming no one in the public had any?
Oh, on the, we'll do them separately, okay. And any comments with, any public comments with regard to the design review approval? Okay.
I don't know if anyone had any que, I don't know all the people, per se, but...
Thanks for...
Yep. So, I think the, where did I write that fourth condition? Basically, we have the three conditions that have been related to do with the lighting in order to accommodate the Gateway Isles, and that was the exact language that was written by Attorney Rose and then also approved by the Gateway Isles. And then, I know Susan had had a comment with regard to augmenting the existing shrub plantings on the northeasterly parking lot buffer, because right now, they were just proposing it to be on the, right, on the northwesternly. So, this is the language to add, that extra similar type shrubs, plantings that they have on the one side, on the other side, adjacent to Park and Tyne Circle, and then to provide irrigation to the existing parking lot islands and buffers that are going to be getting these new plantings, so that they will remain alive. And then I think the fourth condition could be something like, adjustment to the pool location within the U shape of the building may be required to accommodate an existing leaching field north of the pool. Minor, minor amendments to the pool location and deck amenities can be approved by the Building Commissioner without needing to come back to the Planning Board if deemed minor in nature and no further relief is needed.
How do you, Mark, how would you deem something minor in nature? When you have an adjective like that, what makes something minor versus major?
If they're staying within the footprint of the, like, Mark Grills, Building Commissioner, Madam Chair, members of the board, if they're staying within the existing scope or the area of work, and they don't exceed that area, I would consider that minor. If it's a shift in the pool location or a shift in a cabana location, that's minor, in my opinion.
Okay.
I would add that the planning, the town planner should also review the plans, the Building Commissioner, prior to issuance of the building permit.
Does that need to be part of the condition, or we can just do that?
I think it should be. I think Kathy should do it.
So, you want to add like a sentence at the end? So, you'll coordinate with me? Okay, so I just added...
May I have a motion to approve the proposed improvements as shown in the submitted plans as having met the provisions of the Yarmouth Architectural and Site Design Standards and to deny design review approval of the existing remaining elements which do not meet all of the Yarmouth Architectural and Site Design Standards and require relief from the planning board via a special permit?
So moved.
Second, someone?
Second.
Okay, we'll do roll call. Mr. Vincent?
Aye.
Ms. Britta?
Aye.
Mr. Slovac?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
And myself, aye. That's unanimous. Okay, now we'll go to special permit, Kath.
I don't, I'm assuming no one in the public had any?
Oh, on the, we'll do them separately, okay. And any comments with, any public comments with regard to the design review approval? Okay.
I don't know if anyone had any que, I don't know all the people per se, but-
Thanks for-
Yep. So I think the, where did I write that fourth condition? Basically, we have the three conditions that having related to do with the lighting in order to accommodate the gateway aisles. And that was the exact language that was written by Attorney Rose and then also approved by the gateway aisles. And then I know Susan had had a comment with regard to augmenting the existing shrub plantings on the northeasterly parking lot buffer, because right now they were just proposing it to be on the, right, on the northwesterly. So this is the language to add, that extra similar type shrubs plantings that they have on the one side, on the other side adjacent to park and tight circle, and then to provide irrigation to the existing parking lot islands and buffers that are going to be getting these new plantings so that they will remain alive. And then I think the fourth condition could be something like adjustment to the pool location within the U shape of the building may be required to accommodate an existing leaching field north of the pool. Minor amendments to the pool location and deck amenities can be approved by the building commissioner without needing to come back to the planning board if deemed minor in nature and no further relief is needed.
How would you deem something minor in nature? When you have an adjective like that, what makes something minor versus major?
If they're staying within the footprint of the, like, Mark rels building commissioner, mound chair, members of the board, if they're staying within the existing scope or the area of work and they don't exceed that area, I would consider that minor. If it's a shift in the pool location or a shift in a cabana location, that's minor in my opinion.
Okay.
I would add that the planning, the town planner should also review the plans, the building commissioner, prior to issuance of the building permit.
Does that need to be part of the condition or we can just do that?
I think it should be. I think Kathy should do it.
So you want to add like a sentence at the end? So you'll coordinate with me? Okay, so I just added a sentence at the end, prior to issuance of building permit, the building commissioner shall coordinate with the town planner. That's fine.
Any, any comments on that? Everybody's okay with that?
Yep.
How would, procedurally, how would you like to do this, Kathy?
Since we've kind of gone through them and they're up here on the board and I've read them out fully, I think you can just make the motion with the four conditions as identified.
Okay. May I have a motion to approve special permit 118 submitted by RJ Resorts Beach Resort Owner LLC for 28 South Shore Drive to grant relief from section 404.2.6 of the Yarmouth zoning bylaw for existing buildings and site conditions that do not comply with the Yarmouth Architectural and Site Design Standards as outlined in the design review comment sheet with the conditions as presented at the meeting and read, the four conditions as presented at the meeting and read aloud by town planner Kathy Williams.
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
We'll take roll call. Mr. Vincent?
Aye.
Ms. Britta?
Aye.
Mr. Slovac?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Approved unanimously. Thank you.
Very much.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you very much. As we'll be seeing again.
Next on our agenda is, oh, I got to close the hearing, Kath.
Yes, yep.
Or any other public comment? Any public comment? Okay. May I have a motion to close the public hearing with regard to the RJ Resorts Beach Resort Owner LLC, Red Jacket Beach Resort, 28 South Shore Drive, South Yarmouth, Mass.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call. Mr. Vincent?
Aye.
Ms. Britta?
Aye.
Mr. Slovac?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
And myself, aye.
Good remembering, Joanne.
Well, I got a couple of things out of order even though we had talked today at length.
Well, you know, when you get a little thing at the end, I mean, you've kind of got to think on the fly, so.
Yeah, well, thank you for that. Next on our agenda is a lot re-release for definitive subdivision 105.7S. In our packet is another request to release lot 104 Three Cordic Road from its covenant. Kathy, you want to run through that?
Yeah, this was something that had done actually right before I got here, where they were just looking for a lot release, a re-release when the property was being sold at that time. In your packet is some additional information that was done by Elizabeth Hued, who was the interim town planner at the time, where she had gone through and identified, you know, went through the file jacket and also talked to the engineering department and basically indicated that everything is fine, you can go ahead and do the lot release. And you guys did do the lot release and then they didn't record it. So now we need to do another motion. It's the same exact release, just been updated with the different names to protect the innocent. And then there's just a motion there.
Okay. Any questions, board members, concerns?
So we're just changing the date, right, Kathy? Everything else is the same?
Basically, yes. And getting it re-notarized, so poor Joanne has to come in and sign it.
So may I have a motion to approve the request for a re-release of lot 104, otherwise known as Three Cordic Road, South Yarmouth, from the covenant associated with land court plan 11622J?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Roll call. Mr. Vincent?
Aye.
Ms. Britta?
Aye.
Mr. Slovac?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
And myself, aye.
This is when you find out why everyone's here. It's when they leave the room.
Yep. Next on our agenda, continuing discussion with regard to the accessory apartment bylaw amendments. Kathy has provided us with draft 13, which includes some of the changes that reflect our deliberations and sentiments board members expressed since we finished our public outreach in June. We've met various times in July, three times at various locations. During a July 5 meeting, we had four members present. And then again at our ZBA meeting, we had two additional members present who expressed some comments with regard to changes in the draft. So Kathy's going to run through draft 13, the latest we received just tonight with the law, with our legal councils, town councils comments on it. So I'm going to turn it over to you, Kath.
You have the latest version I left on, on the dais there, so everyone has that. So the first edit is related to section 407.31 where we had required some kitchen specifications in the accessory apartment. One of the comments we received during listening session was, that's covered in the sanitary code, you don't need to duplicate it here. I confirmed with the health department that it is in the sanitary code. They actually require an 11 cubic foot refrigerator in the sanitary code, so we can take it out here. I think that's kind of a no-brainer on that one. Some of the things that I did add in here was, in the existing bylaw, it's basically saying any pre-existing non-conforming structure, this gets back to, I think, Peter Slovac's comment when we were still having some carve-outs for by right, any pre-existing non-conforming structures to be converted to an accessory apartment must receive a special permit as outlined in section 104. So if we were, still had some carve-outs, this would have required you to get a special permit anyway if you had a non-conforming garage, for example, and you wanted to convert that to an accessory apartment, this would require to be a special permit. I put it back in here because we're still going back and forth on the special permit by right type thing, it hasn't been definitively decided yet, and we don't know whether in the future you might want to have some carve-outs in the future and then we'll forget about this, this issue. So having it in here just tells you you need a special permit if you have a non-conforming structure. Right now, we're saying that all accessory apartments will require a special permit, so it doesn't matter, but maybe later in the future it, it might matter. I don't know if anyone had any questions on that.
Would, that would also apply if they were given relief by ZBA?
Correct, because it's still a non-conforming structure. Even if you've gotten relief, it's still non-conforming. Correct?
That's a good point. We'll constantly comment, so, I guess.
When we did meet with the ZBA, they did comment that they typically do put a condition in for garages, like if they gave relief in a side yard, set back for a garage, that it's not uninhabitable, you can't inhabit it. So they made it sound like they normally have been doing that anyway. So anybody who'd want to inhabit it would need to get a special permit. Number four, this is just adding a note that says, an accessory apartment shall maintain two separate means of egress. This is something that's in the building code, but this is something that's regularly, it sounds like it's a problem for people. They always think that, oh, well, the stairs that go up through the, through the main house is, is a second means of egress. No, it's not. It needs to be a separate means of egress. So this is more of a putting it in here to make sure people think about it, that they need these two separate means of egress. It's covered under the building code, though. One of the things in talking about the unit sizes and how that would be measured, that was something that came up by the zoning board of appeals, like what's included in this maximum 800 square feet? What's in the bylaw right now has been added in here with a minor twist. It says, the allowed square footage of accessory apartments includes all habitable space, closets, and finished storage. The one right now just said storage, so if you had, you know, a knee wall or you had an attic space that you could access through your apartment, it was kind of being counted. This is just saying it needs to be finished storage space for you, for you to count it. So you need to be like usable. You could also just make it habitable spaces, but I think this language is clear. I don't know whether Mark has anything to add about how that would be interpreted.
So for this one, Kathy, I, I have my garage and it's good enough to have an attic space, but I'm not going to finish it. And I just have the studio apartment in the garage. The attic space above does not enter into the 800 square foot.
With this definition, it would not?
Not.
A lot of times I think people consider they would finish, oh, this is storage, and then before you know it, if it's finished, it all of a sudden becomes living space. So that's why that's been added like that.
Does finish imply heated, conditioned space? Okay. So it can be finished but not conditioned?
Drywall, correct.
Yep.
So the next item on seven, it has to do with parking.
I'm sorry to interrupt you again, Kathy.
Oh, I'm sorry.
This is a question for, for Mark as well. This is a question for you, Mr. Building Commissioner, finished. So I have, I have space and I've done some work and I didn't get a building permit. Put up some, you know, beadboard and it's looking pretty finished. If, if there's no building permit associated with it, is it considered finished?
It's illegal.
Number one.
So that's the end of it. It's illegal work, you got to get a permit for it.
Okay. So not countable?
Well, if it's illegal and we don't find out about it till later, then, then we'll have to make that decision when we see it.
Yep.
You can't tell until they see it.
Yep, okay.
You could have a six-foot high ceiling and it doesn't, we build a code, and therefore it could be a finished space, they just, you just have drywall in there.
Excuse me, this isn't working.
Oh, that's awesome. I picked the right one. They could have, you know, drywall, a lot of people do that these days. They put drywall in their basement just because they don't want the concrete, you know, for whatever reason they do it. But the ceilings are too low and it's not habitable space by definition of the building code, so we can't allow them to have it, to inhabit it.
Okay. Thank you.
So the next one had to do with, with parking. I think when we started talking about requiring things by special permit, we also started talking about what are some of the things that we might be able to back off on and let the bill, let the ZBA use their flexibility and judgment. And that's what this edit is basically saying. Instead of being very rigid in saying the 10 feet off the side of rear property line, where if they were nine feet, they would need a variance, this is just saying where appropriate or feasible, new parking and access to the new parking created for this use shall be adequately screened from the abutting properties through existing vegetation, new plantings, fencing, or other means. So that's, that's the ZBA kind of deciding what those means are. So when you're saying where appropriate, that could be a case where if you're right next to conservation land is a giant wooded parcel, why do you need to put a fence in? And that type of thing.
I just-
Yes, Ms. Britta?
I always get nervous when I see terms like other means and they're not defined. That could be a row of cars.
We could take it out.
I just don't think it adds anything, quite frankly. I think we've covered everything with vegetation, planting, and fencing.
Yeah.
I don't know what other means.
A wall, maybe you have a stone wall or something along those lines. I have no problem taking it out. It was meant to give a little bit more flexibility to the zoning board of appeals if they, someone came up with a different way of doing it that I couldn't think of.
I think they would still, they would still have the ability to grant relief even if we didn't have the term on other means in there. They're fully off, would you agree, Mark, that they have enough flexibility now where they're adding other means? I would suggest we drop it. I think it's too broad, especially without a definition.
So we can say exist, through existing vegetation, new plantings, or fencing?
Yeah.
That sounds great. Yep. I think the big concession that we, that's being proposed here by going all special permit is allowing the, the second homeowners in order to be able to have an accessory apartment. So this, in 11, what we're doing is we're taking out that as the primary residence. One of the things that we do need to know is at the end, we had a definition for owner of accessory apartments, this is the very last page. And basically, town council had, had made some edits to that saying, he changed it because you cannot discriminate or differentiate based upon form of ownership.
Mm-hmm.
I think you could make it someone's primary residence, but I know we had talked about eliminating corporations and LCCs. He's basically modified it to saying, you know, or a manager, officer, and shareholder of a corporation or LLC. One thing to keep in mind is that the owner occupied unit cannot be rented out in any manner. It doesn't mean you won't have abuses and will have to do some follow-up with people, but this is not, this change does not mean someone can come in as a corporation, buy a home, build an accessory apartment, and rent out both. We made it very clear that we didn't want that. That was one of the things that was proposed in the citizens petition, and it was concerned that we would become, you know, the investment capital of Cape Cod with people coming down and basically turning our single-family neighborhoods into dual rental neighborhoods with, with two units on a property. So that, that requirement that the owner unit cannot be rented in any manner remains. This is just saying that, yeah, the owner could be basically whoever's the owner could create one.
I think that's dangerous.
And town council has said that we cannot discriminate.
Yeah, that was his comment.
May I ask how, how you think it's dangerous?
Because the, although I agree with Kathy, only one of the units can be rented, but this allows a corporation to come in and buy the primary unit, put a manager in there and then, and as a, as a representative, and then still rent out the smaller unit, or put the manager in the smaller unit and rent out the-
That's not correct, because they, they can't rent out the, they can only rent out one of the units.
They have to live in one.
They have to live in one, so they can't get a manager in there.
But I'm saying, that a corporation has to identify someone to be living in the-
Who's the corporation, the person that's living there?
Right. I just think, I mean, this was, this was way back when, way back in the day, I think, even think before Peter got on the board, the whole conversation of corporations was one of the first, first things we, way back in October, I think, or November, one of our first was that the concern about keeping this more like a single family or, not a single family, but a single buyer, a single owner kind of thing, and not, we specifically talked about not having corporations enter into the discussion.
That, you're quite right, but I think that this solves the issue, because the issue was we didn't want them coming down, buying a place, and being able to rent out both.
That was not my concern. My concern was them buying a place. Whether it was both of them or one of them, was buying a place. I think the sentiment of the-
I don't think that that would make any kind of economic sense for anybody to, to do that. Why would you buy a place and then-
We're not, we're not constructing on the, on the one-off that it could be, you know, an odd, an odd case. I agree. I just think the sentiment, at least what I heard, and I don't think it's changed, was that the, if, if people are going to endorse this, that one of the concerns was they did not want corporations coming into the town and buying up properties, whether they were going to, the main house or the ADU was not the issue. The issue was corporations coming into the town and buying up even distressed properties, which is what they do, and then fix them up. So I think introducing the concept back into the conversation at this date with a very short window here to market this new plan and hopefully keep to our schedule, I think is, is dangerous.
My issue is with enforcement, because I think it's going to be difficult. I mean, we've heard Mark talk about how, I don't want to say overwhelmed, but certainly Mark has so much to do now with existing violations. So I'll ask you, Mark, how, for somebody who is going to travel the country for four or five months, if there's a violation, how are you going to track this person down?
I have no idea. So right now, you know, people talk about enforcement, how difficult enforcement is. Enforcement is, you know, we don't know about a lot of things that happen in town until somebody makes a phone call and then we find out about it. So in reality, you could, every part of this book is difficult to enforce, there's a process to, for enforcement. We can't just go knock on your door and say, hey, get out of your house. We have to send them a letter. We have to do all, you know, it has to be a legal document as a process, and it's a lengthy process. We don't, I've shortened the process now, I'm just, now it's, I'm getting people to housing court a lot quicker, I just don't have the time to ask them nicely anymore. And they're, how do I enforce whether or not they're living there? It doesn't say they have to live there, it just says it has to be their residence, correct? Accurate?
Right. But I'm thinking if there's a violation, there's a complaint, neighbor complaint, they reach out to you, and the second homeowner is in Florida, in Europe, how are you going to enforce it if you can't get the owner?
They'll get a letter from us, so we send it to wherever they're registered to live through Vision, which is the town's website, which shows us where the owner lives. We send them a letter, if it bounces back to us, we, you know, we look further, we dig a little bit deeper, maybe Vision's not- Maybe Vision's not updated, which has been the case on a lot of times. So we just keep sending letters until we get ahold of somebody. And, you know, if they ignore my first two letters, they get a ticket. And that usually gets their attention.
Unless they're traveling and don't get the ticket.
Well, they're not going to travel for, they're not going to travel for two or three years. They're going to be traveling for a week or two, or maybe a month at most.
But maybe six months, or eight months. It's a second homeowner, maybe he's only here two months out of the year, right?
Right.
My problem is, is I just think it's going to be more difficult for you to follow up with the absentee owners.
We send a lot of mail to Florida, and Georgia, and Texas, and California. I just talked to somebody in California the other day for a short-term rental violation. Called me right back, I woke him up in the morning, but they called me right back. So, and we got it resolved over the phone, I didn't even have to send a violation notice. So they, and we got that through the rental certificates, we got their phone number through the rental certificates. There's ways to do it, it just takes time, so. We, the bad ones always get resolved, and then the, you know, the underlying ones, they can, they can fester for, they can fester for a little bit of time.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other, any other comments? I have, I have one, because I heard early on in this, going way back to when the petitioners were looking to get something on special town meeting a year ago, that there is, the, there are the cases where families have trusts, families have LLCs. They're not corporations with, they're not in the C-suite. They're just families who are, who are, for one reason or another, probably trying to protect an asset and are in trust and are LLCs. So I, I, I like the idea of trying to open this for more opportunity, for more homeowners, more types of homeowners. I mean, we mentioned in the purpose, that the purpose is to broaden the range of changing, housing change choices, to add additional units. There's only a couple of avenues you can do that, by increasing the population of, or the, if you will, the sample size of how many homes might be eligible and willing to continue. And I think that the, what I heard from previous meetings is that there is some concern about family trusts and family LLCs, that they're just not the large business corporations, if you will, so.
The original definition included trustees, so we did cover the trustee issue, because that was a concern. Because people do put their property in trust now.
Right.
So if we ended it with property individual or as a trustee, so we did, we did help out there. Kathy, did he explain to you why, I don't understand the discrimination issue, quite frankly, the differentiation. How does that all play out? I don't understand how that works in this case.
Yeah, I asked for some additional clarifications, and I haven't heard back. But I think it's just saying, you can't say you're eligible because you happen to own this as a corporation and you're, but you're, so you're ineligible, but you who has it as a trustee or an individual, you can do this. He's just saying you can't do it based on ownership.
It's a violation of property rights.
So our, well, so our definition, up until the time he read this, was always wrong. In other words, he...
It's a brand-new definition.
This owner, this accessory bylaw thing?
This is a brand-new defin, additional definitions are all, these are all new.
Right, but I thought the one in, oh, I see what you mean, okay.
So this is the first time Town Council has looked at that definition.
So I thought we had covered it by trustee, and he's saying, no, because, because we, did he suggest any language that we could use that would not be discriminatory and yet keep it to individuals and family trusts?
I don't think it's possible to do that. I mean, he's just saying the type of owner doesn't matter. If you're not making that be their primary residence, which is what we were doing originally, and you're saying other owners can do it, we can't say, this owner can do it, but no, that owner can't do it. So I think that's what he's saying.
May I, may I make a comment, please?
Certainly, Mr. Vincent.
Because I was also one of the proponents of saying that we don't want corporations to come in here. And I'm still, I still believe that. But let's, let's go back and think about what this is. If a owner who lives here has this house and they are the owner, and they want to put in an accessory apartment, they can do it, they just have to live in one or the other. Okay? Great, so that's, they can make an accessory apartment, they're helping somebody out. If you are an owner, you live off Cape, you have a second home here, you may still put in an accessory apartment. You just can't rent out the other one. It's going to remain vacant. So there's no problem here. The problem we were trying to stop by, you know, calling it dangerous that a corporation would come in, was that they would come in and buy properties and then rent out both the principal structure and the accessory apartment. This stops that from happening, so it solves the problem.
That's the problem, you define it, that was not my problem.
Okay, I still haven't, I'm not clear what your problem is, then.
My problem is having corporations the ability to buy property and put an ADU on it. That's my problem, and that's the problem I heard residents express concern about.
I'm curious how that's the problem.
Well, the sentiment seemed to be they wanted to keep it for, like, residential neighborhoods now, where an individual owner owns a piece of property, or the property's held in trust, a family trust. It's not GE owning the house. Because GE owns the house, how does not get ahold of GE if there is a problem in the house? So that was what I heard months ago, and I don't think that, certainly I don't think that's changed. I can ask, but I don't think it's changed.
May I just make a suggestion, let's be clear, GE isn't coming down here and going to buy up Yarmouth.
How do you know?
Just so they could have, rent, own a part of a house?
How do you know?
And rent out, and then create an accessory apartment?
How do you know?
Because that's just crazy thinking, that's why.
The landscape is filled with literature, Chris. Look at any, look at, look at towns in California, which is exactly what happened. Corporations came in and bought out wholesale streets and made them into ADUs. So that's what, yeah, they did, and I can give you some articles.
Okay, I'd like to see those.
But their zoning, their zoning bylaws are significantly different than ours.
Very little.
That's not the issue, it's the concept, it was the concept that disturbed the people. And, and we were...
And I heard people say that the concept was one...
Leave it in, and let's see what happens.
Yeah, well, we have two members who aren't here, so we, we need, this is still an open issue.
Yep. Let's tell the public that we've decided that we think corporations should be able to participate in the ADU program.
Well, that's your language, Susan.
But that's exactly what we're doing.
If it's, if it's a family LLC, you're going to call that a corporation?
No, we covered family LLCs by saying individual or as a trustee.
Oh, trust, LLCs are LLCs.
LLCs are fine, corporations...
You can't discriminate by form of ownership.
That's right, and that's the issue, we can't discriminate.
In the same way, we can't discriminate against the tenant.
Then, fine, we should have said that six months ago when we were talking to the residents.
And you can't say it can't be a woman, or it can't be a Native American, you can't discriminate.
Good, well, leave it in.
So there you go.
Leave it in, let's sell that to the public.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, certainly, Kathy.
So if, say a corporation were to come in and buy three houses together, what would be their financial impetus to do that? To just create an accessory apartment that, and then they can only rent out one unit? So what are they doing with the, with the other unit?
Hey, I'm not a corporation, all I know, I'll bring you articles, and Chris.
It would be interesting, yeah. It would be interesting to know if those articles are talking about people renting out both units, because I would totally understand that, wholeheartedly. It's very, very different.
Bylaw says, you can't, if you're not a second, if you're a second homeowner, I'm trying to talk, please. If you're a second homeowner...
And let's tell the public that we have skipped back on our definition and we're not letting corporations...
If you are a second homeowner, you may not rent out both. It's that simple. If it's not your primary residence, you cannot rent out both, problem solved.
That's your definition of a problem?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Smith.
Mark, is that the mic?
Oh, Mark, I'm sorry. Need to look up every once in a while.
Every now and then.
Every now and then.
The building code actually has two separate definitions. One has a definition of a homeowner, and two is the definition of a property owner. And they're very different. And I, I actually printed them for Kathy earlier, and they're bright yellow and highlighted, so. I think that if she reads the owner of the property, which is in 780 CMR, it reflects more what Town Council's comments are regarding the definition. The definition of a homeowner is different. The definition of the homeowner refers only to who is, who can apply for a building permit to do work on their property. An owner cannot do it if they don't live there. A homeowner can do it if they reside or intend to reside, that's exactly what the code says.
But if you're a second homeowner, and this is not, this is your vacation home, so to speak, you're not intending, when you say reside, just like live there at some period, some type? Or live there permanently as a resident when you say reside?
Resides or intends to reside, that's what the code says.
So that would be a second homeowner? No, and if you intend to reside, you could be a second, it could be a second homeowner.
When I'm done remodeling my house, we plan to move to Yarmouth, I get that all the time.
That's what the definition for homeowner is in the building code. It's basically saying, either you reside there and you're the homeowner, and you reside there and you can get a building permit, or no one's living there, you own it, you intend to reside there, and so you can do your improvements. But I think it's interesting to know whether the, it's a good conversation with Town Council, the difference between owner and homeowner, and whether there's something that can be done with regard to this definition. It sounds like it might be problematic, so let's see if we can't dig a little bit deeper on that one.
Yep, okay, great.
One of the things is, you know, there's some concern about, in number 12 there, about, even though we require the accessory apartments to be leased year-round, there's some concerns that someone might lease it year-round to use as their second home. So we've included some information, language there about used by tenants who will be making the accessory apartment their primary residence. Obviously, that's the intent of what we're doing, we're trying to make year-round residence, trying to give them, give them places to live. The only comment that Town Council had was, you know, how, how do you enforce that? And that makes things obviously a little bit more difficult. I agree 100% with, with Mark. I mean, anytime you have a bunch of rules, and let's face it, the zoning bylaw is a bunch of rules, and there's going to be people, like me, who adhere to rules, and there's going to be people who don't. But enforcing it, it's just, it's difficult, it's just going to be difficult. There's going to be people who want to fight it because they don't like it, that doesn't make sense to them personally, or whatever, and it can be difficult.
I'll make a quick comment on that, because I can tell you that the town has certain bylaws about how many unregistered vehicles you may have in your yard. And I can tell you that there are, I know somebody in my neighborhood just had his cars taken away. You know, took a process by some, another neighbor. But I know that there's others in my neighborhood that still have the same amount of unregistered cars. So that's, that's a violation, but these guys can't be going after everybody. There's people that are going to follow the rules, and there's people that are out there intending not to follow the rules. And that's just the way life is, and that's not the job of this board, to try to stop that because we can't. That shovel and watering has to tide, friend.
Yeah, you'll never, you'll never write a bylaw that catches everything. But, you know, following up on Chris's comment, that luckily the majority of the people do follow the rules. So you have, you know, I say, I have a saying, 1% of the people take up 99% of our time. And that's the reality. We just spend a lot of time chasing a lot of small things that just irritate their neighbors, so. You know, on top of that, we issue permits, we're, you know, we're doing site visits, we're, you know, every day, we're annual inspections of every hotel in town. So there's, there's just motels, restaurants, all these things are part of the services that we have to conduct. We have to do these things by code, so. You know, violations and complaints, we get them, they come in, they come in waves. May, and, you know, July gets quiet, it'll start up again at the end of August. It's just the way that it is, it's just the nature of the beast.
So basically, we're eliminating, if we're, basically, the last thing that we had left was having all of the accessory apartments by special permit, and not allowing for any of the carve-outs. We kind of heard that repeatedly, and with the goal of trying to get an amendment passed at town meeting, the board was amenable to removing the carve-outs at this time. So basically, what, what this means is what's in the current use table would remain, which is that accessory apartments are by special permit. And then we're just kind of numbering this. One of the edits here is in records and inspections. Mark and I had kind of a long conversation about how he would get these affidavits and some of the changes that have come through the implementation of OpenGov, which came online in May. So I think he's hoping to streamline this and have a lot of these things maybe being incorporated into the requirements in OpenGov. So if somebody is registering for an annual rental, they have to provide the affidavit at that time and acknowledge, you know, that they, you know, all of this information that we're looking for in the affidavit could be done online. So having it notarized would make it difficult to do that, so we're eliminating it being notarized. And then the other change that you're seeing here, we're just trying to match up when you would have to do the affidavit with when you're typically doing the inspections, because that's when OpenGov sends out some stuff. Like Mark was saying, with the family related that we have now, they get the inspections every two years. They now have it in OpenGov that he can send out a notification that you need to call us for an inspection year due. We can also say, and you need to fill out this affidavit. So what that is highlighting in yellow is just following the inspection schedule of annually for rental apartments and every two years for apartments used by family members. This all came about because we started looking at this, we didn't have OpenGov up and running and fully activated. Now that we see all the things that it can do, we're like, let's try and implement and utilize that as much as possible. The only edits in red there are just being clarified, taking out the principal residence part, because we just said that we're going to allow second homeowners, or that's where we're writing the bylaw, just to show that right now. And then, obviously, one of the other things that people were concerned about was getting a copy of the lease. I think if you provide the affidavit that you have 12 consecutive months, if Mark has any suspicions, he can have the ability to ask for a copy, or at least to see a copy of the lease agreement, maybe required upon request from the building commissioner. And then I added in, and then the owner needs to adhere to the requirements of Section 407 of the zoning bylaw. So we just want to, there'll probably be a link there where people can say, here's the link, you've read it, and your, part of the affidavit is, I've read this and I understand, these are the things that I can and cannot do. That's what those edits are related to. Just renumbering things until we get to transfers upon sale. There was a, I know that Susan has had some concerns with regard to transfers upon sale. We have differentiated how you transfer upon sale depending on the type of accessory apartment you have. So accessory apartments, the new ones that would get created, these unrestricted, I say that unrestricted because it's not limited to affordable, or capital A, would transfer upon sale. And then basically, I reworded it to say, new property owner shall provide an affidavit to the building commissioner per Section 407 blah blah blah, within 45 days of the sales. If the property is transferred with a tenant in place, otherwise, the owner shall provide the affidavit prior to occupying or renting the accessory apartment. So if you don't want to rent for a while, or you got to find a tenant, or you know that, oh, so-and-so's daughter's coming to the Cape in six months, I'd love to be able to rent to her, you have the opportunity to do that. And again, it also covers if you have a tenant in place, you don't have to kick them out. You can keep, roll them over if you would like to do so. And then the, again, the family-related accessory apartments and the affordable, the existing ones, if you haven't transferred them to one of these unrestricted accessory apartments, this stays exactly the same as the way it is now in the bylaw, where it terminates upon transfer unless you do certain things within 45 days. The question is, is 45 days long enough? Did you guys want to modify that, or were you happy with leaving that as 45 days?
Madam Chair? I thought we, at the last meeting, we were talking about the 45 days, I thought we had a discussion about raising it to 90.
I couldn't remember, I've highlighted it, so if that's something that you want to do, it make, it's no harm, it gives people a little bit more time, especially if family-related.
I think that was one of the things that we heard during the listening session, was 45 days seemed like a, in some cases, a tight timeline.
Was that something where you want to change it all the way around, so even for the new ones within 45?
I've seen a reason why not to be consistent, just that way that all the numbers are the same.
Yep. Does that make sense?
I'm okay with 90 days. Members of the board? Mr. Vincent?
I like 90, 90 days, 45 is pretty quick when you're, when you're selling, trying to move, and get all your paperwork together.
Yep. All right.
Ms. Ritter?
I don't have anything in.
Okay. Peter?
No, no.
Okay.
And then the only other definition that we added was with regard to primary residence, which, which plays a roles for the tenant to... which plays a role for the tenant, to identify it for the tenant. It's just a primary principal residence in the dwelling where a person lives for a majority of the year and is considered their permanent address. A person may have only one primary residence at any given time and is issued for legal purposes such as determining where a person's legal residency is. I had it had in votes or pays income taxes, but the town council changed it to legal residency.
Is there a distinction between primary and principal? Should we be using?
Same. Do you want to get rid of?
I think if you have two, people might think there may be a distinction. I would choose one and stick with it. I think it's easier to understand. It doesn't matter which one it is, but I think it's easier. Once you have two, people might think there's a difference, and if there isn't, it should be.
Been saying primary all along, so let's.
Yeah, okay. That sounds good. Okay, so we still have some work to do on this.
I think the biggest thing is kind of going back around with town council. It sounds like that's kind of the last sticking point, might be the second homeowners and the corporations.
Well, I think Susan raises a very valid point, that that is new information, a new definition, that the public has not seen. And I think it will be important to get a real sense from town council as to why that, why that particular definition needs to stand. Because that will determine, I think, how the board will proceed, quite frankly, on that particular issue.
Someone refresh, we talked about year. Was there a discussion about calendar year, or was it just every, any 12 consecutive months?
Susan, how I remember, it was 12 consecutive months.
It was 12 consecutive months, so we didn't have to say calendar year.
Of the lease?
No, it says here, "Primary residence," where a person lives the majority of the year, and is considered, and is considered, so is that like October, November, December, January, February, March in Florida? See, I wasn't sure whether it was calendar year or 12 consecutive months.
I think it's the calendar year, because that's your taxes, and that's typically how primary residency is done. It's usually the 100, 183 days or something.
Where a person lives for a majority of the calendar year, well, in that case, they wouldn't live in Florida for the majority of the year. They'd only live there for three months, October, November, December. Do we need to change that?
To say calendar year?
Well, I don't know. I mean, I just don't want, it says year, so someone could say, if I start, if you had the federal government, you start October 1st, and then September 30th, I meet the definition, because I'm in Florida for six months, October to April. Someone else could say, uh-uh, you're only in Flor, in a calendar year, you're only there October, November, December, and you don't meet the definition of primary, you know.
I think if you were in Florida the last three months of one year and the first three months of the next year, your primary residence is not in Florida, because you're not there, you're not there the majority of the year. It's wherever you are for those other nine months of the year.
The other six months, because let's assume they're there for six months, three months. And just check the town council and see if that needs to be clarified, whether we need to say calendar year or 12 consecutive months, just so that we, if someone asks us the question, we have the answer.
Because there are so many different years. There's our year, there's our tax year, there's the federal government tax year, there's the calendar year.
And so many people go to Florida in October and come back in April, so those are two different years. Would that meet the definition of this? Right now, someone could say, no, it doesn't.
No, because you've lived there.
You haven't lived there the majority.
So like, you were there January, February, March.
And then you're going, then split.
2022, you're back for the summer, but still, it's the year 2023, and you're, so it is.
Does that meet the definition with the split in the middle?
Oh, I see what you're saying. Yeah, I think if it's more than one half of 365, that's where you're.
Regardless of how it occurs.
Yes. Calendar year.
Trailing 12.
Then that has to be clear. Just clarify it, that's all.
No, it's a good point. That's a good point.
Any other comments or concerns, next steps on this? We'll be talking about it at our next meeting. Thank you.
Kind of, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
You usually announce the next agenda. I'm moving on in my mind.
No, that's okay. Keep us going. Potential sign amendments.
Yeah. I realize this is a little bit late in the game, to be presenting you guys something that might want to go on the fall special town meeting. What we're trying to find, and a lot of it is related to some of the things that we've encountered through the Riverwalk Park, is that we want to be able to, you know, allow for naming rights, allow for sponsorships, you know, allow for donations. And if you're asking people to provide that, you need to recognize it in some particular right way. If somebody's giving you naming rights on town property to name, for example, like the event space at the Riverwalk Park, sponsored by Blankety Blank, they're going to want to sign. And right now, the existing bylaw, zoning bylaw, is, doesn't really accommodate those particular types of things. What we have done in the past is, we've had numerous times where we've taken certain things out of the zoning bylaw and put them into policies that are governed, and they're signed policies, that are governed by the Board of Selectmen. You may recall that we did that with the banners. We've also did that with the fundraising special event signs. And it's also been done for a long time with the latter slat signs. So what's being proposed here at the end is to just basically add a new section under Section 303.4, signs allowed in all zoning districts, because most town property is not located in the B1, B2, B3, it's located within residential. It's our beaches, it's our recreation areas, and that type of thing. So this would add a section about town-owned properties, naming rights, sponsorships, and donation signs. It would basically say, "In addition to any signs that are allowed elsewhere in this bylaw, supplemental signage may be allowed in town-owned, on town-owned properties related to naming rights, sponsorships, and donations as outlined in the Board of Selectmen's naming rights, sponsorships, donations, sign policy." I've included there, "A permit from the building commissioner is acquired, but no fee will be charged." Getting this in the fall still gives us plenty of time in order to develop that policy. Typically, what, like what we did with the banner policy and the special event sign policy, it'd be sent to the Board of Selectmen, a draft of some ideas that we have. But that doesn't mean that we probably would also want to meet with the DISSOC and talk about that. I'd like to get more information from other town departments, you know, like at Sandy Pond, do we want to name the splash pad, and what would that look like? And start thinking about maybe what type of signs, sign, sign, sizes, excuse me, I'll cut it out. Makes sense.
Yes, Susan. Kathy, when Pat Armstrong briefed the Drive-In Site Committee, how did they, didn't they have a sign policy? How did they raise money? How did they do it without zoning? Did they have special?
I'm not exactly clear how they, they did that.
They had a naming right policy, didn't they? They were naming Fox Pond or something?
The Board of Selectmen has a naming policy.
Right.
But they have the policy, but I don't know how you, what mechanism is in the zoning bylaw that would allow a sign to go up that says Blankety Blank naming rights, like La Russo Lodge.
I think it was a combination of raising money with someone's name on it to put it on town. And I don't, I forget what that whole conversation was about, because it was so long ago.
Oh, yeah, it was about.
But they did it. I just don't know, and they.
La Russo Lodge.
The La Russo Lodge, exactly.
How did they do that without a zoning amendment? Because they did raise money and sell rights, right?
I just don't know what the signage is on that building.
Yeah.
And, you know.
But are you convinced we actually need this for the drive-in site, or can we do what they did?
I don't think we can do what they did, because I'm not sure how they did it. As Mark says, it was PM before Mark, so I don't know how these things got done. But like, if you wanted to have a sign, a standard sign that says, you know, "The event space at the Riverwalk Park, sponsored by blah, blah, blah," I don't see how you can do that in addition to having a freestanding sign at the entrance saying, "The Riverwalk Park."
Yeah, I don't do that, but, well, maybe we could talk to Pat one more time, because I think that group, she said, still exists.
It does. I mean, that.
Something naming.
That's a whole nother process. We have, I have to digest that meeting that we had in March. It was a great meeting with Pat, and it was that Community Visions, which is a nonprofit organization whose goal is to basically take in donations for recreation in the town of Yarmouth, and then digest that, and then we need to present it to the Board of Selectmen. But this is part of that as well, to make sure that we can, there's no point in spending the whole, the whole winter talking about trying to get people to give us donations for naming rights if we can't, if we can't do anything with it. And that's my concern. I meant to bring this earlier, but it was one of those things where things kind of get away from you. So this is all about trying to make money for the town. People are always saying, "What are some other sources of money that you can bring to the town that will help us with operation and maintenance?" And these might be some of the things that can, that can help us with that.
This is not just limited to the drive-in site. This is driven by the drive-in site project, but it's, okay.
Driven by the drive-in site for Kathy to get off her butt and do it.
And the idea is to not have these things be regulated by the zoning bylaw, but rather by a policy with the Board of Selectmen.
Much more malleable, yes, flexible than zoning, correct. And that's why I think we have three other sign policies. It makes his life a little bit more complicated, because then he has to go to these different policies and make sure he has the current one on hand, and.
Yes, we issue permits for some of the Board of Selectmen events, and I still have to review their policy to make sure that the sign complies with their policy before I can issue a permit, whether there's a fee or not. So the zoning bylaw ties to the policy, references the policy. I have to go to the policy, I have to do the research on it. So Kathy's going to actually insert the policy into our bylaws for us, so that I can, I don't have to feel digging around looking for several pieces of paper.
And stick it in the back of his zoning bylaw.
Makes it easier. I won't lose it that way. Yes. But anyway, yeah, so it makes it easier, but I don't have to issue, you know, if they comply, then the Selectmen have to approve it. And once they've approved it, it makes it easier for me to issue the permit.
Okay. One of the things that Mark and I did talk about is, he doesn't think the planks or stone pavers that are on the ground, and you only see when you're literally standing on top of it, is a sign. So we can probably take out the planks and the stone pavers in the sign policy. And he certainly doesn't want to be giving permits for that. So this is just kind of, I think this covers us to continue our work with the Riverwalk Park, and that can be utilized elsewhere, like maybe the splash pad at Sandy Pond could be sponsored by somebody. And still gives us some time to come up with that policy. Because if we don't have the policy in place, and this passes at Fall Town Meeting, no one can do anything, because the policy doesn't exist. It's no harm, no foul. But without this in place, we can't really be advertising.
This needs to be the first step to move this towards a policy statement from the board.
Yes. Yeah. They're going to probably want to have an idea of what we're thinking about and talking about. I just know that there's no way I'm going to have something finalized for Fall Town, you know, final before Fall Town Meeting, but at least we can talk about it, so when people start asking about it, we can explain it.
So you're not pressing for special town meeting?
I'm sorry, I am pressing for special town meeting.
You aren't pressing for special town?
I'm sorry, I was talking about the policy.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. For this, you are pressing for special. Okay.
For the article, zoning article amendment, I am pressing for Fall Town Meeting.
Any comments from board members? Questions?
I don't see it as a huge issue, Madam Chair. I really don't. I think if it helped clarify things, and heads things in the right direction, make things easier for Mark and you, I don't see it as an issue.
Okay. Anyone else? We're okay? All right, I proceed. Meeting minutes. I may have motioned to accept the meeting minutes of July 2nd.
12? 12?
July 12. My eyesight's going. July 12, 2023. Move the meeting, the minutes of planning board meeting July 12 be accepted as presented.
Seconded.
Roll call. Mr. Vincent?
Abstain, I wasn't at this one.
Okay, Ms. Britta?
Aye.
Mr. Slovak?
Aye.
I'm Mr. Smith.
Aye.
I, myself, aye. I may have a motion to accept the meeting minutes of July 19, 2023.
I just noticed something.
Okay.
July 12?
Oh.
Just because you're not at the meeting doesn't mean that you can't vote on it.
But I was at that meeting.
Oh, you were?
Do you have a question about the minute?
I have a question, the fact that she isn't, Mac is absent. Is this the joint meeting? I take it back. I was, I was not there. You're right, I wasn't there. I wasn't there.
That's Jim Saban?
Jim Saban has his hand up.
I wasn't there. Sorry, keep going.
He just.
He just joined in.
You moved it and you, and you voted on it, which is allowed. Okay.
Mr. Saban?
Yes, Madam Chairman.
Welcome.
Thank you. I think I may have lost you now. I just wanted to let you know that I'm here.
Where's here?
I have nothing else to say. I'm currently in Montana, East Glacier, just outside of Glacier National Park.
We wish we were there.
It's been an amazing trip.
Oh, good. I'm glad you're having a good time.
So I've been trying to check in as best I can, so I've been following with minutes, et cetera. Kathy's been sending me stuff, so I'm up to speed as best I can.
I'm sorry, did we vote on July 19? We did not.
No, not yet.
May I have a motion to accept the meeting minutes of July 19?
So moved.
Second?
Seconded.
Mr. Vincent?
Abstain.
Ms. Britta?
Aye.
Mr. Slovak?
Abstain.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Myself, aye.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Smith.
Minutes from July 5 in my packet.
Yes, those were for reference purposes. We approved those at our prior meeting.
Okay.
To inform some of the discussion this evening, for members who hadn't attended. Committee updates. Any committee meetings that we've been to?
Until next week.
I have not been to any.
The CEDC recommended the Dunkin' Donuts, well, Dunkin' Donuts and the project is coming back soon. They changed their.
The J Mart.
The J Mart.
J Mart. I thought it was the Dunkin' Donuts thing, too.
Yeah, so the, I abstained myself. I'm in a butter, so I'll be abstaining.
Oh, right, right.
You know, recusing myself from that, but.
There's the economic development support there. Write a support letter of some kind.
I believe they did.
And they did vote to provide the support, and I did get that.
They support everything. I didn't know vote from them. It's non-existent.
There has been. When I was the chair, there was.
Probably 10 years ago.
Probably.
The CEDC also kindly authorized $100,000 in tourism revenue preservation funds for the event space infrastructure at the Riverwalk Park, so thank you.
Very good.
No other committee updates. I have just one, that's CPC will be issuing the RFP for proposals due back on September 20, so that's going to, if it's not on the street now, it will be. Yeah, it is on the street, Kath, for CPA funding.
And I will not be applying for any projects, which is like a first. They'll be glad not to see my face asking for more money.
Any other board member items? Okay. Kathy, I know you've got some updates for us on a couple of things.
Yeah. The Community Housing Committee and Mary Wagon went before the Board of Selectmen last night for the housing production plan. The Board of Selectmen had some questions, and maybe some ideas of some things that they would like to have modified. Part of it might be eliminating all reference to the Forest Road Chapter 40B project that might be coming through the Housing Authority, and also maybe adding something in there about how short-term rentals may be impacting year-round housing, and what might be able to be done about that. They had talked about having a workshop between the Community Housing Committee and the Board of Selectmen, which hasn't been scheduled at this time, and I'll let you know. But long story short, if they come to some ideas of where they want to make some amendments to the housing production plan, it might need to come back to you guys for reapproval. You approved that in January. You guys had also added some very nice amendments that clarified what that list of potential housing was. It wasn't, it was just things that were identified as potential projects. They were not meant as an approval or an endorsement. It was just identifying them as potential projects out there. Because you needed to show in the housing production plan how you were going to meet your housing production goal for affordable housing, so you need to come up with some, with some things. My understanding is that the Housing Authority is interested in having a public meeting on the Forest Road project. I've heard that it's, I've not seen anything, but I've heard it's August 14 at the Senior Center. I don't know what time that would be, so more information will be pending on that, that I will send out to you guys. The open space and rec plan, the draft has been sent to the Cape Cod Commission, because they also need to review it and write a letter of approval. because they also need to review it and write a letter of approval. It's going to be coming before you guys, the draft, on September sixth. And then we're going to the Conservation Commission on, on the seventh. In August, we will also have it out for public review, kind of ending after you guys have your meeting. Your meeting's going to, I'm going to advertise it pretty heavily, just so you know, so that people can come in. This might be a good place for the public to be able to provide some comment or interest or hear the presentation and that type of thing on, on the housing production plan. And then hopefully we'll go to the Board of Selectmen in October and get their approval.
Kathy, any update on the laundromat site proposal?
Yeah, last night, I believe Bill Scott had kind of taken a bunch of different comments from all the different boards and organizations. And he wrote a very nice, I thought fairly concise, letter, for draft letter, that I, my understanding was approved by the Board of Selectmen, identifying some, some issues and concerns that kind of everybody had and kind of keeping it more of an, in a generic fashion. It's in the packet from the meeting last night, if you're interested. I thought it was very well done.
It's going from the BOS to the Massachusetts Housing Authority?
Yeah, yes, yeah.
Any timeline on that, Kathy?
And when it's going to them, or?
No, the overall project. I know that one point they were concerned about a deadline to get tax credits. That's, at least that's why they said they bypassed the term and went directly to the state.
Yeah, I, I don't.
I don't know what the, I don't know if that's still.
The impression I got was that this was the first step and that now, once they get that letter of approved, site approval from Mass Housing, which basically means that they're eligible to apply to the zoning Board of Appeals for a comprehensive permit, now they have to do all the hard work. What they've presented so far is just examples of architecture from other projects, not this specific project. And they still need to work on the, on the site layout. And a lot of the concerns in Bill Scott, that slash Board of Selectmen's letter was, you know, about how you make the project better. You know, and making sure that they, as they're moving forward and refining it, that they're incorporating all these things.
Isn't there a parking problem?
Yeah, there's a parking problem. There's a parking problem.
Yeah, there's a parking problem. Yeah.
Not enough parking on site, so.
Yeah.
Not enough, yep.
Yep.
Anything else, Kath?
No, I think that's it.
Did you want to, you gave us the calendar for a special town meeting?
Yep.
Maybe we can just fill in our meetings there? And your time, your timeframe that you and I talked about.
Yeah, I think the, the next meeting, I think, is when we're really going to have to decide on what we want to advertise for the, for the public hearing, which would be, I mean, it's August. So we, we had pushed back the public hearing to September twentieth. So that really means I need to advertise it or get it to the Cape Cod times at the end of the month, like the twenty-ninth or something. So the next meeting would be kind of when we would need to start deciding so that I can write the, the hearing notice, the legal notice for the September twentieth advertising. It should be noted here that you're listed as potential meeting with the Planning Board and the Board of Selectmen for zoning articles on October seventeenth. So that might be an opportunity to maybe push back the public hearing a little bit, but I don't really want to do that. So I think if you can't really solve anything or come to conclusions at the next meeting on, on the sixteenth of August, you still have the ability to maybe have another meeting the next week or there's five Wednesdays in the month of August, so.
Let's just meet every Wednesday.
Just meet everyone.
It's not.
Yeah, we have. Every Wednesday, five in June and three in July.
Is it clear to say that I think we are pretty close except for the second homeowner question? Is that a legitimate statement?
I would interpret it.
I'm feeling that way.
Okay. So I think at the next meeting, we really need to come, I'll talk to town council and, and see if we can try to clarify that issue a little bit.
Our next meeting is August?
Sixteenth.
The sixteenth.
We will also be having that J Mart Road project coming.
On the sixteenth?
On the sixteenth, yeah. Yeah, it's already been noticed and the, and the butter notification went out today.
Kathy, can I ask a question about what Mark mentioned as far as the definition between homeownership and ownership? Will town council try and blend that into this whole definition?
I'll explain that there's some concern about including corporations and whether there's anything that we can do without having issues that would kind of define that a little bit better, whether it's homeowner versus owner.
I certainly think from my perspective that if they did blend that, it certainly would help with the whole definition, maybe clarify the whole thing.
Kathy, I also think, I think in the Dennis ADU bylaw, there's a specific statement saying corporations, I think, maybe someone could, maybe, I, I'll volunteer if you want, or you can, I could call a town clerk and find out.
I have.
They had a specific prohibition in the Dennis bylaw.
What was approved, so I can look in, in there.
Did you?
Yeah.
I could be wrong, but I know that was another, that was a discussion with them, too.
So lots to do.
Okay. Anything else, members? Okay, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All right. Mr. Vincent?
Aye.
Ms. Britta?
Aye.
Mr. Slovac?